Okay, apologies for our late arrival. We were in executive session to discuss contract negotiations as well as a student issue made private by, somebody fill in the blanks.
Matter made confidential by FERPA.
Confidential by FERPA, thank you. So we've done our pledge of allegiance and we're going to start with our moment of silence. So Dr. Bowers, I'll have you lead that.
Yes, we want to start the meeting tonight with a moment of signs for a young man, Robert Shartner, who unfortunately was killed by a drunk driver on October 9th. And Robert attended Haldane when he was in middle school, then went to Connecticut, and he was now living in either Fishkill or Ry. We were having trouble finding out, but we did want to recognize one of our students unfortunately was killed by a drunk driver, so we'd like a moment of silence. Condolences to Robert's family.
Thank you. I'd like to start off the meeting by letting the board know, I actually didn't get a chance to tell everybody this, that I received some thank you emails, which are rare, but I received some thank you emails from people about receiving their tax refund checks. And I just wanted to say you're welcome, and that's something that the board works really hard to do, and Diana and Dr. Bowers and our administrative team work really hard to do, to make, you know, to make that balance between doing what's right for our kids, but also making sure we're attending to the taxpayers' needs. And I think we do a good job of it, and we're happy to stay under the 2% tax cap. And we really use that, you know, philosophy with all the decisions we make budget-wise. So, it's okay, enjoy your refund checks.
And they came in part because we stayed, have stayed under the tax cap?
Yes, there's standing under the tax cap as well as providing evidence of shared services with other districts.
Which Diana's worked hard to do.
Yes. Okay, so we're moving into our presentation from our auditors. I'm going to mess up the name. Mr. Joseph Herault of Bonadio and Company provided an external audit report for 2015-16, and he's here to share it, share it with the group. Did I say your name?
Yes, you got it.
Oh, I did?
Close enough.
Oh, okay.
I'll just, it's good.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm here filling in for Alan and Heather, who are both away out of town, so I did not actually have anything to do with your audit, but if you have questions, I can try to answer them. If not, I'll look them up and try to get back to you tomorrow. But I'm not going to go through the whole report, we were joking about it earlier, it's 66 pages long. I know you have it electronically, so it's on page 61, I'm just going to go to the summary page. The type of independent orders report we issued was unmodified, it's the best opinion you can get, it's basically, it's the old, what used to be called the clean opinion. Internal control over financial reporting, we do some testing there, there were no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies, and there was no non-compliance material with the financial statements. Something that would be non-compliance material would be if you were over the 4% general fund, fund balance, which you're not. So, you're good, I have a couple districts that are over that 4%, so that's good. And I guess there's no management letter this year, which is also very good. So that's it for the financial statement audit. Extra classroom audit, a little different, it's cash basis, the opinion there is modified, and that's because it's cash basis. The cash receipts is the reason it gets modified, because we cannot satisfy ourselves as to the completeness of the receipts and their student involvement, so it's just kind of, there's no way to issue an opinion on the cash receipt side of things, basically, so it gets modified. But that's not bad, every district we do gets the modified opinion for extra classroom. And then there's also a letter, I'm not even going to go through that, that is basically significant audit findings, there were none. We would also put in there if you changed accounting policies, nothing new this year, last year you had some big changes, but nothing this year, so it was a good year.
And congratulations, Ann Dineo.
Yes, ma'am. And a thank you to our audit committee, we have two audit committee members here, Peggy Clements and Evan Schwartz. I don't know if you guys have any follow-up questions, or if the board in general, if anybody has any questions, I know we've been looking at the material.
Just a, again, just a shout-out to the chairperson, Tom, which is very, very, and Roman, and-
Carol Pell.
Right. Just very, very lucky to have them on, because these are guys that are in the industry. And, you know, we look at these, we look at these reports, and, you know, they're accounting reports, and, but they look at it and they actually understand every page, and it's, we're very lucky to have them. And congratulations, Ann, and the whole business office for really, you know, putting it together.
And there's a letter from Tom Campanile later in the agenda, where he's basically letting us know that he recommends that the board approves and accepts the audit, and that he is really proud of the work that the school district is doing. So that's there for anybody else to read as well. And right now, the audit is not public content, is that true, until we approve it? And then once it's approved, does it live on our website? Or, yeah, so if anybody wants to see it, they can look at it.
It'll be moved to the public content and board docs, as well as put on the audit page on the website.
Great. Any, any further comments, questions, besides great job? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to discussing concussions. Mr. Chris Salam is going to present to us, he's our director of athletics, physical education, health, and the dean of students.
Do you want to let them, should we just-
Sure.
Change it up, so we'll have our high school students report out to us early tonight? Thank you.
It was planned. Hello, I'm Brooke Vowes, a senior here at Haldane, and as someone who's involved in the multiple clubs, sports, and after-school activities, I'd like to extend a thank you on behalf of the student body to Dr. Bowers, Mr. Krucci, the Board of Education, Haldane's teachers, and organizations like the Booster Club and the Haldane School Foundation for continually funding and supporting the endeavors of students in their extracurricular activities. Through everyone's support, Haldane is able to encourage and nurture a niche for every student to fit in and continually grow. In the past years that I've been a high school student, high school student here, there have been numerous clubs that have been created, reinstated, and even grown, and I think this fact attests to how supported every student feels in their work. At Haldane, we have clubs that cater to everyone's interests and passions, from feminist groups, student athletic councils, Mr. Salam runs that one, community service groups, musical choirs and bands, peer mentoring, and even interest groups about Shakespeare and history. And the thing is that this explanation is only scraping the surface. It's truly amazing how many extracurricular activities are present here at Haldane, and they continue to shape and transform my peers and Haldane students for the better. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke.
Hi, I'm Jeremy. I didn't prepare, you know, some, a written thing, but Mr. Krucci did ask me to like talk about a little, about sort of what's going on in the arts sort of area at the school. We're having rehearsal right now for Pride and Prejudice, I ran down with my script in my hand, and I guess I was just thinking about sort of how musical programs here and theatrical programs here have developed during my time at school, and it's been in a huge way, and so I was going to talk a little bit about jazz band, chorus, and drama. So first of all, this year jazz band, we sort of, Ms. Serena was sort of able to change up the dynamic of it from what it has been. We had auditions and, this year, and we sort of have a reduced size of the band. And so, for those of you who may not be familiar with, you know, the workings of jazz ensembles, they're usually smaller, more sort of elite groups, if, I don't know what the right way to put it is, but basically, I like where it's come, and we're able to sort of participate in a band, a jazz ensemble that's modeling the dynamic of real jazz ensembles that we might participate in college or in real life, for those of us who might be pursuing music, so I really do appreciate that. Second thing, chorus, also this year, a lot of my friends have been talking about some things that we've been doing that we sort of really appreciate, which include singing more a cappella pieces and doing more theory. For instance, today, we, Ms. Ferbota gave us a sort of brief explanation of the circle of fourths, which is not something that we've ever sort of seen in chorus before. We've just done, you know, sound sight readings and, you know, hearing with the notes, but we've done a lot more theory and a lot more a cappella and a lot more technical vocal things. So that's something we've appreciated this year. And finally, we're working on, you know, one of, some people like see this play as Pride and Prejudice, as one of, like a really, like, big theatrical masterpiece, and so I just think that, from what I've heard, the community and the student body really are appreciating the direction and the quality that the drama department is sort of taking. So that's my sort of impromptu spiel on this, and I'd like to also thank the board for their continual support and funding for the arts and music programs at Haldane. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Jeremy, when's the play?
The play is December 2nd and 3rd.
Thank you. December 2nd and 3rd. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah. So thanks very much to both Brooke and Jeremy for their comments. I really appreciated, I appreciated the way you all were thanking us as well as giving us information. I think the board also really wants student representatives and students, as well as the entire community, to know that we are really interested in hearing what your concerns are as well, things you think we need to know, questions that you have. I think I can speak for probably all of us on the board, that we would welcome the opportunity to talk to students about something like that, so please think about these opportunities as both ones where you can tell us what's going on, and hearing about the clubs is really great, it's something that we really have supported and paid attention to over the years, but also as a place where you can come and ask for information, ask about policies, things like that, you know, it's, we really want it to be a two-way street. And Jeremy's gone, but the other thing I wanted to say is I really love the way he pointed to the jazz band, and he really brings up this interesting tension of making sure that we have lots and lots of extracurricular activities that can really include lots of students, but also the value at times of sometimes having more selective activities as well, right? There are things to be gained from both, and I appreciated his, his take on that.
Cool. Thank you. And our middle school students are doing something valuable.
Well, all of our middle school students, our president and vice president both had games tonight, and we're very concerned about homework and going from the games right to here. So I said, I think the board would understand, we'll work on the next month. I think there's a little nervousness too, so we're going to work through and coach a little bit.
Okay, so now I think we're moving into our concussion presentation.
Do you want to pull it up, or we don't, we're good, I got it.
You got it?
I got it.
You're going to be entertaining enough, you don't need a parable?
I could sing and I could dance, whatever you guys need, all right?
Okay, great.
First off, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk about concussions and the health and safety of our student athletes specifically. So we all know that concussions are a major issue in athletics, specifically adolescents and, you know, teenagers, because there's a lot of issues that during their development can arise with concussions, and we want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to protect our student athletes and to protect them, not only from, you know, short-term effects, but long-term effects. So, just want to review right now what's currently being done, and then we're going to talk a little bit about what I'd like to do going forward. So currently, if a student has any kind of symptoms during a game, practice, event, the coach is supposed to remove them immediately from the contest or from the practice, they're going to check for signs of a concussion. All of our coaches are trained and have to take an online course to review concussions every two years, so they're well-informed of what to look for. If a student does have a concussion and they go to the doctor and it diagnosed, they're obviously out of athletics until further notice, when they are cleared by their own medical physician. So, just wanted to, you know, briefly tell you what's being done. We also have in the sports registration packet, a form that's basically a policy saying that, you know, parents sign off on it, the children sign off on it, basically telling them what the signs are, what the symptoms are, what they should do if they get a concussion, because it's very important for the students to also take some ownership and to understand that, you know, we, we know they want to play, we know they want to be involved, but they have to worry about their health and safety, so they have to speak up, they have to tell us. Sometimes signs don't occur immediately, sometimes it's a day after, hours later, a couple days later, so we need to make sure that our athletes understand that. So it's very important that I get that point across now, and I'm also going to talk to the athletes going forward about that as well, because I know everyone wants to, you know, tough it out, but the smarter decision, the smart decision is to sit out, make, make sure you're cleared, make sure you're ready to come back, because you don't want to do any damage, like I said, short-term or long-term by coming back too soon. So a couple of new things that we'd like to do is, we'd like to implement impact testing, and what impact is, it's a baseline test that measures, you know, students' reactiveness, their brain function, they answer questions, and we get a baseline score of how they respond to these questions. And what we use that for is, it's a tool that could be used for doctors, if a student does sustain a concussion, they have to test again two to three days after the concussion, and what it does is we compare the scores. And it's not something that I would do necessarily, but it's something that the doctor would have as a tool to help assist them in their assessment. So I think that's something that was done a few years ago, it went away for a little while, we'd love to bring that back, we feel like it's a tool that can help and that will help, so it's something that we're going to implement, hopefully starting with the winter season on November 24th. There is a cost associated with the testing, so I figured I'd tell everyone. Currently, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association has an agreement with impact testing, so that for every test that we purchase, we get a discounted rate, and it's $1.25 per pre-test, and then a post-test, if there's an injury, it has a $5.00 cost. So we're only talking maybe $600, $700 a year in terms of a financial impact. We'd also like to implement something called a return-to-play protocol, which a lot of other districts have in their policies, and it's something that's recommended by the state. So once an athlete is cleared by their medical physician, it's usually a week, sometimes two weeks later, once they're cleared for physical activity, we slowly ease them in with a day-to-day routine that measures, you know, how they feel during different physical activities. So it starts very slow, easy exercises, for example, day one is like a 10, 15-minute jog, day two might be 20 minutes of weight training, and then throughout the week, we push them more and more, as long as they don't have any symptoms and they're able to participate without any repercussions, so.
Chris, could you just talk about how that would work if it, if it was a non-athlete, maybe a child that was hurt in gym?
Sure. So currently, I was talking to our physical education teachers, if a student gets injured, whether it be a concussion or anything else, they obviously sit out of physical education until they're medically cleared by their doctor, they get a note from the nurse, the nurse sends it to me and the physical education teacher, and then they're cleared to return. In that case, they don't go full throttle right away either, the PE teachers are very good at working with students, if they say, oh, I'm still not feeling well, or, oh, this hurts, they'll ease them in back, so that's something that I will share, the return-to-play protocol, not only with our coaches, but also our physical education staff. Does that answer the question, Dr. Bowers? Okay.
And Chris, outside of, if a student is participating in sports, or, you know, just being physical outside of school, is there an obligation for the parent to report to the school if they've had a concussion outside of school?
Yes, because concussions not only have effects on their physical abilities, but also their cognitive abilities, so it's very important that the teachers are aware, the administrators are aware, because we want to do whatever we can to help that student return. So if you do have a concussion outside of school, athlete or non-athlete, make sure that you go to see a doctor, make sure that you get the note to the nurse, and please inform your teachers and the administrators of your appropriate building. Okay? All right. I already mentioned the return-to-play protocol, but I'll go through that real quickly. So like I said before, each day phases in a little more and more activity. Day one is low-impact stuff, light aerobic activity, for example, you may walk or ride a stationary bike for 10 minutes. After that 10 minutes, we shut you down, how do you feel? If there's any symptoms, we're going to ask you to go back and see the doctor again. If you say, I feel good, I'm not too tired, I don't have any headaches, I don't have any symptoms, day two, we'd move back, move to a little more vigorous activities, nothing too crazy, jogging or moderate weightlifting for about 20 minutes. Day three, if there's no symptoms, we continue, you may do sport-specific, non-contact activity. So you may do a couple drills for your sport, as long as there's no physical contact, and obviously the coaches will monitor your progress and see how you're feeling. And like I said earlier, it's very important for the athletes to be honest and to tell us how you're feeling. Everyone wants to play, everyone wants to return as soon as possible, but you're going to do more damage to yourself if you aren't upfront and honest with the coaches. Day four, you can participate in non-contact drills, oh, I said that, I'm sorry. Day five, participate in regular drills, the coach will monitor how they're doing. Day six, you can return to competition if there's no signs or symptoms. So realistically, if you receive a concussion, let's say today, you go see your doctor tomorrow, if you're cleared in a week, if you do the return-to-play protocol, it's almost a two-week turnaround before you can actually come back and participate in a game or a full practice. Does anyone have any questions on that, so far? No? Thank you. All right. Of course, it has to be like 85 degrees when I'm presenting. Woo! All right. So with all these concussions, another thing I'd like to talk briefly about is athletic trainers. A lot of school districts have an athletic trainer in some capacity, some are full-time, some are part-time, and athletic trainers could be a huge benefit to not only the athletic program, but to the community and to the school as well. So I'd just like to talk a little bit about how they can help. So like I said already, many schools have athletic trainers that help with injury prevention, injury management, and provide athletic programs a certified professional who can help identify an injury. They can also assist coaches with injury prevention exercises and drills, so it's not just if a student's injured, they take care of it, we can also have them work with our programs and our teams to do prevention exercises to hopefully train our athletes in a way that they're less likely for an injury. All right? They also can help us with implement our impact testing, they can help monitor the test, they can help record the test, they can help me as the test administrator, so there's definitely a lot of things that they can do to help our athletic programs. They'd also be available for all levels, it wouldn't be just contact sports or just varsity programs, we would like to have someone here, you know, from modified JV and varsity across the board. So no matter what the sport is, if there's an activity going on here at Haldane, we'd like them to be here. All right? And the costs can vary based on hours, based on whatever contract we agree with, so, but realistically, it may be for someone who works maybe 30, 35 hours a week, possibly, you know, $25,000 to $35,000 per year.
Can I ask some questions about that?
Absolutely.
So can you talk a little bit about our history? Has Haldane ever had an athletic trainer?
So, I was informed that we did a few years ago. When I took over last year, we had a volunteer who came once a week in the morning on a Thursday during class periods, so needless to say, needless to say, it wasn't very effective, but we did have one, I believe, a few years ago, correct? I don't know the exact timeframe, I don't know if it was full-time, and I honestly don't know why it went away, but from my end, it's something that is extremely important for us to pursue, because the safety of our students is our number-one priority. And in athletics, it's just part of the, you know, the reality of them is that kids are going to get hurt, no matter how safe we are, and we want to make sure that if they do get hurt, we have experts here to help them monitor their injuries so that they don't do any further damage going forward.
Chris, did you say, I'm sorry, is it more common or less common for the school, like in our area, the schools that we play that have-
Most, most, most schools have athletic trainers. It does vary, some full-time, some half-time, some have multiple, it's really whatever, the size of your district is also a factor, so it's really whatever you can, you know, figure out contractually.
The most of the schools in our-
Yes.
That we play have athletic trainers?
Yep.
And I can attest to that, because every school we go to, there is somebody on the sideline who's medically trained, and we're basically the only one-
Yeah.
-who does not have one.
Okay.
And when we go to other schools, and, or if they come to us and their athletic trainer is with them, do the other schools benefit at all from that? Is that athletic trainer just, you know, for their team, or is it-
No, the athletic trainer is going to help any athlete there, home or away, if there are Haldane athletes or not. Their job is to really make sure that the kids are safe and that the coaches aren't doing anything that they shouldn't be doing or jeopardizing, you know, the health and safety of our athletes or the away athlete, so. And I actually, I asked a couple of our coaches just, you know, what they would think of us having an athletic trainer and why they feel it's important, so I'd just like to read a couple statements. The first one is from Coach Ryan McConville, our varsity football coach. "Currently at Haldane, the need for an athletic trainer is high. Athletic trainers can help coaches and administrators develop proper plans for medical injuries and work to minimize risk and concerns for athletes participating in sports. An athletic trainer will be better suited to address the needs of any injury and can help provide an injury update to parents and coaches during practices and athletic contests. Additionally, athletic trainers can help to inform coaches, athletes, and parents, support and tips for proper exercise support, nutrition, and healthy lifestyles." Once again, that was from Coach Ryan McConville, varsity football. And my second statement is from Coach Steve Schweikart, our varsity boys soccer coach. "It is imperative that Haldane somehow incorporate a trainer into the budgeting process. With so much emphasis on student-athlete health and wellness, it seems counterintuitive to play athletic contests without a trainer available to ensure player safety. Every other school that we played this year had a trainer available during our games. Having a trainer on-site provides a sense of comfort for parents, players, and coaches, knowing that a professional is available to properly diagnose and treat any potential injury, no matter how small." Once again, Coach Steve Schweikart, our varsity soccer coach, on the boys' side.
And right now, Chris, are there, like, when the ambulance are present, or the EMTs, are they present at some games, not all games? Do we pay for that? Do we not pay for that?
Sure. So, in New York State, there's various sections in athletics. The state rule is that it is recommended to have a medical physician or a EMT or doctor on-site for all football games, it's a recommendation. However, I actually found this document yesterday after a lot of searching, in 2010, section one in their football sports standard made it a mandate. So even though the state rule says it's a recommendation, the section rule goes above that, saying it's a requirement. So in the past, Pat Pajarski served as our EMT last year, I can only speak on last year, obviously, I was here last year, however, this year, for certain reasons, we had to look elsewhere, and the Phillips Town Ambulance Corps has been able to help us for our football games. We had one earlier today, the modified level, they were here, they've done a great job, and yes, we do pay for it.
So Chris, my question was, is it just that other contact sports like soccer and lacrosse, the section just hasn't come up to speed? Because quite honestly, we've had more soccer injuries, concussions than football.
The answer would be yes, and to be quite honest, most schools have that trainer there for all their contests, pretty much, so that's where they don't have to hire an EMT or have an ambulance on-site, because that counts towards the section mandate. And to be honest with you, like you said, soccer on the boys' and girls' side, as well as lacrosse, they're also very high-contact sports, so it would only make sense, if we can, to have a trainer here to help with all of our sports, so. Does that answer your question, Laura?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're saying that if we did have an athletic trainer, we probably would not then need an ambulance present?
We wouldn't.
Technically?
Nope, we wouldn't.
And how much do we currently pay? Do you have any idea, like annually, on our ambulance?
Well, this is the first time we used it, because like I said previously, Pat Pajarski served as the EMT-
Okay.
And she was just getting paid like an hourly rate as a district employee. This year, it's a little different. And I want to say off the top of my head, it's $250 a game, I might be wrong, for two EMTs, which is what they had to provide, so I want to say, and that's about three to four hours of service. So I want to say with the six football games, it was about $1,500, six home football games.
And do you have a sense of, you know, it's, what Laura was saying was that, you know, there's just as many injuries, if not more, in other sports? Do you have a sense of what those numbers fall out to for us at Haldane, like, in terms of concussions or, maybe just in general?
Sure.
How many injuries we have throughout the year?
Sure. In terms of concussions, just this fall alone, I believe we've had four concussions in soccer, and I think we've only had one in football. It might, it might be a fifth, there was a student actually yesterday that appeared to show signs and was supposed to go to a doctor today, so it may even be five, and that's, I think it was-
These are actual concussions, like, as they were-
Yes, they were diagnosed, they saw the doctor, they were diagnosed with a concussion, they had to sit out, all those things, yeah.
And primarily, it's soccer.
Yeah.
Where we don't have a trainer, or a medical professional on the sidelines.
And is there a difference between boys and girls?
Um, this year, it seems to happen more on the boys' side, but to be honest, I think that's just, you know, a coincidence, it's just as common in females. To be honest, there's studies that show it's more common in females because of their necks and- and brain development and that kind of stuff. So it's, it's actually, a lot of youth soccer programs have banned certain things in soccer. For example, heading until a certain age to try to protect them. But in high school, that has not come yet.
But what's interesting, sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt you, is that most of these concussions did not happen because of heading, they happened because of collisions.
And it's just, you know, it's a very fast sport, soccer. You know, you're running all over the place, there's a lot of contact. You know, I think the perception, quite frankly, is football, hard collisions, but it's, it's more frequent in soccer. So, does that help?
And would you say that in terms of, you know, the helmets always get a lot of discussion around concussions? So do you, but I, I feel like I've read that it's not always that protective. You know, are helmets part of the equation with, like having good helmets, sound equipment?
Yeah, we-
Do we have sound equipment?
We send out our equipment every year to get checked by Rydel, which is pretty much the leading source of football helmets. They recondition them, we pay a fee. If they're, if they come back and say that they're not usable, we purchase new ones. So in terms of that, we do make sure that we're checking the equipment to make sure they're safe.
The baselines cost a dollar-
Twenty-five per test.
Per test. Do you do it every year with every student or just once in four years?
I forgot to mention that, it's recommended by IMPACT that you do the test every two years. So theoretically, we have a seventh grader come in, played modified sports for the first time. We test them in seventh grade, if there's no injuries, we're good, until ninth grade, and then again in eleventh grade. If you have someone first time come out as a tenth grader, we test you then. So it's gonna be the first time you come out for any sport, and then we'll keep a log of when you were tested, what year you were tested, and then we'll have to renew it every two years if there's no injury. If there's an injury, it's recommended that you test two to three days after the injury takes place.
And if we had an athletic trainer, they could help with that?
They would definitely be able to help with that, yes.
So before you leave, we also have in, on the agenda, both a policy and a regulation on concussion management. And we thought it would be a good time to see if you have any thoughts or any opinions on both of those. I believe it follows your recommendations.
It, it does, I think it's a strong policy. I'd like the board to, you know, move forward with it. And I will do whatever I can to help implement it and make sure that's being followed. Any other questions?
I'm getting the sense that it, it sounds a little bit like, like an athletic trainer to me, I'm kind of putting it in this category of resource officer. You know, I feel like we had similar conversations around Paul, that it's not always about like just bracing for the emergency. It's about all of this additional stuff that goes into it. The support surfaces, the educational piece, the, the just-in-case is also super important. But it's all these other pieces too, it's not just the just-in-case.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's something that would be definitely beneficial for the athletic program and the community, like I said. You know, as, as a former coach that didn't have an assistant certain years, whenever you have an injury specifically, especially during a game, it's very hard to deal with that injury. In some cases, you may have to call a parent and coach at the same time. So you're, you're neglecting unfortunately, at least one piece. So if you have a trainer there, if I'm coaching by myself and I've got, you know, twenty kids and I'm coaching a game, it's a lot easier for the trainer to come over, have the medical information, call the parent, let them know what's going on, make sure that the athlete's okay, and then update the coach while the coach can continue to coach, you know, the contest. So that, that's another piece to it that I think is very important.
So I mean, I guess, you know, the board would need, and Dr. Bowers and Ann, you would need to also share with us your, your thoughts on if this is actually something we can afford? And if so, how to afford it? And as the board considers, do we think it's important enough to pay for?
Is it something that we would try to implement this year?
We could.
We could.
And I kind of went into the budget and looked at places that would allow us to do something this year, even though we didn't budget for it. And one of the places that I think would be probably the primary area, if we chose to do this, would, would be, was our line for the school librarian in the middle of the high school. And we had a librarian that left in the summer, and the amount that was budgeted for her position is about twenty thousand dollars more than the amount that we're paying the person who's in it this year. So if we continue, it is a temporary placement, and if we continue the temporary placement, it would give us the funds necessary in order to be able to do something for the winter and the spring season. So I think we probably can afford it for this year. And Chris and I have been crunching some numbers. We've been looking at what some of the places that provide the services and what they pay annually or hourly. And we think we have the capabilities for at least these two seasons to meet those needs, if you choose to go that direction.
But the librarian that we currently have is a temporary position?
It is, well, it, it will be this year, for this year. And then we tried to do searches earlier on, and it was just, right now, everybody's in a position. And so we were talking about it in administrative council today, and we thought probably March, April-ish was the best time because students are about to graduate from college. And Julia would move into that search at that point.
So we may be able to fund it this year through some attrition. But moving into next year, we would need to actually find the money in a more permanent way, potentially.
So I, I guess to me, the issue is like, should we find the money? I really feel like we have to find the money, I mean, the one-
Maybe for money, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually- In the, the issue that, you know, people who know my kid know he wasn't a real athlete, but he did run for the first few years of high school. And I, I felt like the, a, a common thing among parents is concern about injuries and concern about injuries being managed properly. And recognition that our kids need, not that the coaches aren't helping them, but they need help making those decisions. Anyway, basically, that it's super important. So I'm all, I'm all for it. I mean, to me, it's like, not can we figure out, it's just like, how do we figure, how do we figure it out?
How do we figure it out?
How are we gonna do this? What are we gonna do?
Ann, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, it just, I mean, that's a staggering number, when he said that we've had five concussions in six weeks. That's, that's unbelievable, so. Yeah, so I, I think it's a no-brainer.
And can we start baseline testing right away?
We would start most likely with the winter season right away, yes.
Great.
So it sounds like you have our support.
It's good to hear. Appreciate it.
You did a good tap dance up there for us.
I didn't even show you guys my moves, next time.
So it sounds like you have our support, and then Dr. Bowers will leave it to you to, to help us with the next steps in terms of-
For next year.
Getting things more official for this year-
And next year.
And next year, making sure that's in our budgeting priorities. I'm gonna kill this fly. Okay, thank you, Chris, I think you're out of the hot seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up for the hot seat, Mr. Twardy.
Thank you for having me back for Part II of Facilities. Last month, we, this is my first one. What we did is we had, we did have a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting on September 29th. And it was just, I had brought some of my recommendations from the Building Condition Survey to the group. And we updated our Excel spreadsheet, and we updated it and updated it and put it in different format now, and I hope it's a little more user-friendly for everybody. The upper half is projects that I'd like to be working on now. The middle section is possible future considerations, and the bottom is completed projects. Just about all of these are from the Building Condition Survey, as well as our maintenance group. And I just also wanna let you know that they're constantly being updated and evaluated. We have an old building here, something that is down there for possible future consideration. All of a sudden, in six months, might be moved up a little bit. So we are continually evaluating. My chart starts with the item, then the actions needed, then it's rated also. It's rated five being the worst, and that's from either a health or safety perspective. The location where it is, was it on the Building Condition Survey? If we can do it in-house, cost estimate, the status of it, phase. Phase one was last year, so we're done with phase one. Phase two is anything from now until the end of summer 2017. And then the proposed funding. So what I'd like to do is go over the items that I'd like to do between now and the summer of 2017. And if you wanna ask me questions as I go along, fine. If you wanna wait till I go over those ones, fine also, and-
I just wanna share with you, Mike, just so you know, that the board just received this spreadsheet this afternoon. So for some people, this might be the first time. We received your, you know, a revised one, a previous version. But just so you know, we're all kind of-
Is there a difference between these two?
They are two, yeah, they're two formats with the same information. You get to pick which one you prefer to look at.
And this information is not made public?
It is. It's in the public content in this variation. So everyone can follow along at home, if they'd like.
So I'm gonna just start at the top, number one there is plumbing evaluation. In the spring, John D'Angelo started telling, brought some concerns to him about plumbing. You know, it's an old building, we have old pipes. And he mentioned something about an infrared type of testing that you could do through the walls to tell you about the conditions of your piping. So I want John D'Angelo to come here, and he will be coming in. As a matter of fact, he is also gonna be at our next Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. I want him to come in before that too, just to go over some of this stuff with me. So let him go over and talk to me about the infrared evaluation and what we have to do to do that. And I'm not saying our pipes are in bad shape, but it would be nice to know before we find out they are. So that's why we wanna do the infrared. The steps at the entrance to the cafeteria, right over here, the last step, there's a big step. So we just wanna put a guard railing up there, a little, little railing, and that can be done in-house. Jeff Palace already said he can do, can do that. So that one would be under my O&amp;M budget money. Trees on campus, that's a continuing, continuing function that we're doing. Every year, we're concerned, and at the end of the summer, we go around with an arborist and look at some of the tree branches and let them determine if they think they're healthy, not healthy, and what we should do about it at the time. So we've been on a pretty good program with that for the last two years. And that also comes out of the O&amp;M budget. One thing I'd like to talk about is the gym bleachers. We've been looking at that for two years, we've been getting prices, prices on repairing them. Bleachers are from 1990. The cost to fix them is gonna be about thirty thousand dollars to repair them. And that's for twenty-six-year-old bleachers. We did have a price for right around seventy thousand dollars to have new bleachers, the same exact bleachers, new, and the old ones taken out. I do have pricing on a different set of bleachers that is a little bit less. I don't know about the quality of those bleachers compared to what we have, so that's what I'm looking into now. But I, I am getting other prices on that too. And that would be, that would have to be paid for with a capital referendum.
So let me just clarify, and maybe Ann can help us. If you look down the, the chart, there are a number of things that say capital referendum. So we would have to choose to do something in order to get the funds for that. And we put money in the capital reserves, and that would require voter approval to pull the money out. And with all of the capital referendum items, can the, will the funds within the capital reserve pay for that? So we're just asking people to release the funds. So if we totaled it up?
If we totaled it up, it would be close. There's, we put more money in the repair reserve than is earmarked on this grid. And, and that's also because we talked about the turf replacement, we have money set aside for that. I think that because there are so many blanks for it to be determined after the architect evaluates it, and some of them could really be some big-ticket items, there might not be enough, and that would be something that the board would have to consider. Do you want to put it in the base budget? Do you want to have a referendum to use the money put aside in the capital reserve? Do you wanna put, sell a bond to, to do this? A lot of it is paving, and paving is costly. There is one particular project on here that involves asbestos abatement, and we know that that gets pricey. Most, if not all of the things that are earmarked capital referendum are things that are construction projects that would have to be monitored, and we would need an architect for. So, so that's why that's designated a capital referendum because of the nature of it.
And Ann, can you just remind, so what did we put in the repair reserve? And what did we put in the capital reserve?
Guessing. We put three hundred thousand dollars into the capital reserve for future facilities improvement. And three hundred thousand dollars into the repair reserve for emergency repairs and turf replacement.
And the capital reserve is the one that requires voter approval to get the money released?
Yes, the capital reserve would, is, are projects that would require a voter approval because those would be considered bondable items. Even if we're using our reserve money, those are items that typically you'd sell a bond for, so the voters would have to approve that. The capital repair reserve, or I'll just call it the repair reserve, 'cause that's what we, we call it on this grid. The funds can be expended after a hearing, a public hearing, and then the board votes on it. So you don't need a voter referendum to use the repair money.
And one of the things that the differentiation was that things that are new, like new bleachers, that would need to go through the capital reserve fund. But if we were going to fix the bleachers, that would be considered a repair and would need to come out of the repair reserve fund.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And Ann, I had a question, you always come up with creative solutions, so I'm just going to say thank you. I know we've talked about possibly if you bundle up some projects. Could you tell us a little bit more, you get funding?
If it's an actual capital project, if it's a capital referendum, then that's going to be a capital project. You're going to, to get aid on it, it's called building aid. If it's a bond, you're gonna get your building aid over thirty years or fifteen years if you have a short bond. If you bundle something together and it's a hundred thousand dollars or less, you can incorporate that into your general fund budget. You can bring in revenue from your capital reserve, and then you'll get thirty-four percent of that expenditure in total the next year because it's considered a small project.
Less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, and less than a hundred thousand dollars.
But the things on this list that have capital referendum next to them, my quick calculation was that it was like over two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, if you don't wanna do it, if you wanna do it all at the same time.
But we could bundle a hundred, a hundred?
You can bundle a hundred into the seventeen, eighteen budget. Then if there's something that's phase three that we're gonna, or phase four, and it can wait. There, there are different ways to do that. Or if you wanna go with a full-fledged capital referendum and use the three hundred thousand dollars, then, you know, you're, you're gonna get that, maybe if you're paying for it in cash over ten years. But the rule to get all of your thirty-four percent the following year is that it has to be a hundred thousand dollars or less.
But you still get the thirty-four percent?
You still get the thirty-four percent, but it's spread out. And it just comes in your building aid, and it's part of that state aid package that we all wait in April to see what we're gonna get. So that's bundled in there.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, again, everything I'm talking about right now is geared toward going to phase two, which is between now and the end of summer of 2017. Last year, we did have our pump room looked at by Uni McC- Last year, we did have our pump room looked at by Uniti Mechanical, but Uniti Mechanical's our boiler people, they thought our pump room was all right. They recommended to maybe move an old electrical panel. That's the room right behind these cabinets here. So John D'Angelo is going to come in, and I want him to look at that, just to see what he thinks about moving that electrical panel. So you're going to hear a couple of times that there's going to be architect to evaluate, and that's one of the times. One thing that is important to me is the next one hinges on the fire exit windows in the elementary. If you look at the elementary classrooms, there is one window in each of these that is a fire exit window, and it's a big, tall, about maybe a six-foot window, and it's pretty wide. And they swing out outside on hinges. It's not a real good design. At this point, they're getting a little old, and I'm just concerned that the hinges are going to become problematic. And before that happens, I would like to replace those windows with an over/under window. That's what was recommended to us for safety. And I did get pricing on that. And again, that's another thing that I do want John D'Angelo to look at also, to see if that's the right way, right direction to go in for that. But that's something I would like done on phase two. There's a walkway between the high school and the middle school. Right now, it's asphalt. There's some cracking in it and everything else. But there's about a four-foot section, especially up in the upper part, that's all dirt. Now, this fly's getting me. Did you show them over here?
I think there's multiple flies, unless it's very active.
But this walkway, so that, there's a part of it that's all gravel and dirt, and you can't, it doesn't hold grass seed, it always gets washed away. So it was recommended that we should asphalt that all the way out to the curb there. So I'd like to do that in that upper section and then repair the rest of that walk. So I'd like to see that done in phase two. And that was also recommended in the building condition survey.
Mike, can I just?
Sure.
I know that you, you've created like a priority list.
Right.
But can you explain to me why having like a patch of gravel is all that dangerous as compared to like windows that might fall on kids?
Well, I mean, that gravel there, when it gets wet and it gets icy easy in the wintertime because any time you get the snow pushed over and that dirt gets all icy, and there's some cracks in that asphalt also on the way down. So there's dripping concerns.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying I would be more concerned about the windows than I would the asphalt, but I still say it's high on my priority list.
Okay. Thanks.
The elementary boys bathroom, well, as well as the girls bathroom, I might as well hit both of those are overdue, well overdue, to be refurbished. And there's a couple of questions that came up at the last meeting. We'll have to bring them up to ADA compliance. And if I do that, am I going to lose a urinal in the one bathroom? John D'Angelo needs to let us know if we need a certain amount of fixtures per student by code. And so he's going to also evaluate that. But it, it's overdue to do those bathrooms.
We need ADA compliant bathrooms regardless.
Excuse me?
And we need ADA compliant bathrooms regardless. You know, it's just something that we need.
Yes, we don't.
Okay.
I think you're grandfathered in.
Right, exactly right.
But it would be.
But once you start doing work on them, then you have to.
Right. No, I know we're grandfathered in, but I think as a district, we want to be an accessible district.
I don't want anybody to think that we're not compliant.
Thank you, yes.
Is what I was getting at.
We're not breaking any laws.
Okay, the next one on the list is access to the second floor mechanicals at the high school. Now, this is something probably nobody here has seen, but to get to all of our air handling units up in the high school on the second floor, the only way to get there is to put up a six-foot step ladder, lift the ceiling tile out, put it to the side, and then put an extension ladder up in there, right in the middle of the hallway. So if we need to get in there in the middle of the day, which we have in the past, the students are going to be walking past this ladder. It's on an angle, it's not real safe, so it's an OSHA problem. My suggestion is right inside the custodial closet there, I would think that we should be able to put up, permanently attach like one of those metal fire ladders, if you've ever seen them going up into hatches, something like that. But again, that's something that I want John D'Angelo to look at. I think it would be a lot safer for our guys. Mike Lizikottis is up there every month checking on the filters up there, and we're up there quite often, and I don't want to see anything happen. This next one, I do not have in phase two, I have it in phase three. And that's the walk-in cooler in the cafeteria. Last year, I was a little bit more concerned about it than I am right now. Since that time, I have had De Silvestri and Sons, Scott from De Silvestri, they're our refrigeration company. They came and looked at it, and he said, "Mike, the only thing that's not in great shape is the door." He says that's, you know, just be a little gingerly with that. He said, "The inside, everything's working fine. I wouldn't be surprised if you get another four or five years out of it." I do have a plan B if it suddenly did go down, which would include putting the, some of the stuff, the food that's in there, in the other refrigeration. And then at that point, I had spoke to Nancy about this. She could order maybe a three-day supply at this point. And if we really ran into problems, Foodtown would help us out with storing some food. So we just wouldn't order as much.
So that's a shift, right? Because I feel like on one of the lists that we received, it was like $100,000 ticket item needed to be replaced ASAP.
That was the air handling units, that was $100,000, not the refriger.
No, I think at one point it was, but I think after he brought somebody in.
Further investigation.
It looks like it's, it will last longer than we anticipated. And we're also talking about potentially just putting it into a budget if necessary.
Right. Putting that, working that into the budget for the 2017, 18.
Great.
Okay.
And what's the number on that going to be when we have to buy a new one?
If, if it goes, we, you know, if we have to buy a new one, it would be, I think around $30,000.
It's listed as 29.
I think also what we were saying was that after Silvestri came in, they recognized that the actual casing, so a walk-in refrigerator has walls, basically.
Right.
And correct me if I'm wrong.
It's just the condenser.
They said that was all in good shape.
Right.
It's the refrigeration units that you have to keep up with. So it's, you wouldn't be replacing the walls.
Right. So in other words, right now, he thinks the condenser is in, in fine shape, and, you know, it can last another five years. But we do have a backup plan, plan B.
Okay.
Okay. Next one would be fiber in the playground. You might remember this one from last year. We did the northern side of the playground last year from the fiber. What we did is we excavated out all the old decayed fiber and put in new. Any fiber that was still usable, I put into the southern side, and we said that we were going to continually evaluate the southern side. Well, I've been evaluating the southern side, and I think we need to excavate that side and put in fiber. And I'd like that done in phase two, and that will be able to be handled under my O and M budget. Install handrails, that's at the district office. And the cafeteria, I already talked about the cafeteria, and there's a couple of other places that should be able to work, be worked into my O and M budget also. Install guardrails along Craig Side Drive in the field. In other words, all these parking spaces right up on the hill here, if you go out there and look during the daylight, you'll notice that there's no barrier there. If a car one day does go, there's a hill on the other side of that. And I would like to prevent that, and alls we have to do is put up a guardrail. That pricing would include taking the old fence down here, going down by the ramp, and running the guardrail all the way up to, up to the containers up there. And there was one other, one that I'd like for this year, and that is the sills in the elementary. If you look when you're there next time, all the window sills, they're like slate, and they're starting to tilt in a little bit, which means if water runs, now it's running toward the building. We want them to be facing the other way. So it's, it's not an immediate concern, but before it gets out of hand, I think we should take a good look at that, and I'm going to let John D'Angelo look at that also. So those are the things that I'm working on for this coming year that I want to present to the board and sit and talk to Ann and work out the financing. There's other things on there that I don't want to talk about all of them, but if anybody sees anything on there that they want me to answer questions about, please feel free.
Air conditioning in the upper music room, is that right in there?
That's right in there. Scott from De Silvestri and Son, last year, worked on those several times, and he said, "Mike, these are really pretty much near the end of their life expectancy." He tried bypassing some of the pumps on them last year. He came in once this year to work on them. They're very important to us because that room gets very hot in the wintertime because we have steam pipes, steam mains that are behind the walls there. And what happens is that room was getting warm, so we now have an inverter on the air conditioner, so they work in the wintertime. That was part of the energy performance contract. They came in and figured out a way to keep that room from overheating. So that's something that, you know, again, that might last us another two years, but it's, we really need to keep our eye on that also.
Mike, the water heaters in the main building?
Yes.
Is that, are we going to evaluate that? I felt like that was one of the topics we discussed at Buildings and Grounds when John was going to come, he was going to explain the whole. I thought we said those were in pretty good shape.
I'm not going to say they're in great shape. They're starting to get a little bit up there.
And that's what's in this room here?
No, that, that's up in the boiler room. The water heaters are in the boiler room. This is the heat exchangers in this room.
Okay. Oh, so that's what was replaced, the heat exchangers?
Heat exchangers, yes, yes. Yes. Yeah, the water heaters are all up in the boiler room.
It's a completely different thing.
The heat exchanger, what the heat exchanger does, we have steam boilers. The steam comes down to this room over here. Steam is converted into hot water. This lower from here down is all heated by hot water, and the exchanger is what does I know there's a lot of information here, and it's, if anybody has any questions, even, you know, during the next couple of days, feel free to call me or email me also. Okay?
No, no, don't go yet.
Okay.
The doors at the elementary showing signs of wear. Are those doors, are, are any of the doors, or anything, like a security issue? Are there anything, is there anything on this list that's specifically for security?
Those are, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about those with security, but I did notice some rot on there, and it's starting to.
On the bottom, yeah, I've seen that, yeah.
Yes. The ones that we thought were not solid enough last year were still solid enough, we just brushed them down real well and painted them over. That was the Bell Park Lot one and the Southern Library one. These ones are going to need to be replaced within two or three years.
But all the doors lock and work?
They all lock, they're fine that way, yes. I don't know if you know, so we have a new door put on the elementary. Oh, I'm going to talk about that in my facilities report.
All right. Let's take a thunder. So John D'Angelo, I mean, is he just helping us out of the goodness out of his heart? Or do we have him on retainer or something?
Good one.
Serious?
No, he's, he's very generous that way.
He's been real generous.
But yes, we will be asking him to, to charge us for some of these because we're going to be moving into the next stage.
We do already have that money budgeted, and we have every year, too.
We, we pay him some consultation.
Well, we have the money budgeted, but I don't know if we, if he's billed us for any of that yet.
Well, we'll talk to him about that when he comes.
Yep.
Okay.
That ice machine, how much life does it have left in it?
Funny you should ask.
Does that need to be moved up?
Um, I think it might get moved up because I just got an email today, it's not producing ice. I just did have it reworked, geez, two or three weeks ago, and it was working great. And I don't know why it's not, it's not producing ice now, so I have to have them come back. So that, that's one of those items that might get moved up quickly.
Well, especially if we have a trainer. I mean, they're going to be constantly looking for ice as I.
Yes, they will.
Well, also, the kitchen uses it in the morning.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it is an important item. I would, if we do get a new one, I would recommend going with a higher-capacity one. This is a pretty small one. And I think they generally go for around $4,000 or $5,000.
So what's our next steps here, Dr. Bowers?
Well, we are going to have a conversation with the board at this point. You can either, we can either start it now, or we can think about it and come back and how you would like to proceed, and then we'll make recommendations to the Building and Grounds Committee. If we're looking at doing, pulling money from the capital reserves, that's one thing. If we're looking at doing a full-blown project, that's another thing. What we have already with the operations and maintenance, we'll just go ahead and start doing those. But we have to really decide how we're going to proceed. And if, if we're going to simply pull money from the capital reserves, that, or we could do $100,000 this year and $100,000 next year and drive the aid. So we really have, there's a lot of thinking that needs to be done.
And with a voter approval for the capital reserve, that means either, we would also have to decide if it's, there's a time issue and we want to do a vote that's not in May.
Right.
And do it beforehand.
That's right.
To get the money released, to get something moving that's important, or can we wait till May?
The other thing is we need to consider, based on the strategic plan, of looking at the facilities we presently have. And that was one of the charges of the goals, is to really look and make sure that we have the capacity that we're looking for within our buildings. And that may be a conversation to link into this, or we, we can finish with this and then sit and really think about the future and what the needs are. But that's also out there somewhere. And so I guess at this point, we need to decide if we want to do small capital, if we want to do a larger capital project, pull money from the capital reserves, and then ultimately, if we want to do a bond referendum for the district.
So do we feel like this is, there's a combination of all, yeah? And is that something that Ann and Dr. Bowers, that you guys would have like a recommendation to us at some point, and you would want us to talk it through like at the next meeting? Is there like a?
Yeah, we can do that.
A tempo to it here? Do you want to?
I think we need to hear your thoughts first before we make a recommendation and kind of hear what you're looking for. And there's, there's a lot of schools of thought right now, and we, we can see potentials in three different ways of doing it, so.
So maybe at the next, everyone can digest this information more, get questions to Mike if needed.
And John D'Angelo, I've been here by then also.
That's great.
Oh, great. And so then the next, next meeting, it can be part three here.
Okay.
And we can continue on. Okay.
I just want to add that an important thing on the list that can be put in motion pretty quickly is the, the hinges on the fire exit windows, which we know is an important item. If it's to be paid out of the repair reserve, it would just need a hearing and for the board to approve that. And that's a project that we can get in motion this year.
And is it something that we could like do as early as next?
Yeah.
We issue, soon as you approve it, soon as you vote on it. And it's just the board that votes.
And we'd have, we would designate the board meeting a public hearing to have that.
Right.
So, and then at the end of the public hearing, if you choose to vote on it. But I know that from the conversations we've had at Buildings and Grounds, and having that looked at, that it's an important thing because it's, they're not going to get any better.
It sounds important, yeah.
So when would you like to have the next conversation?
Well, could we do the public hearing and get a vote on the windows for the next meeting?
For the first?
Yep. So everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
And if anyone needs more information, we have enough time to get that.
So Julia, November 1st for the?
Do you want to look up the time, how much time is required for a public hearing?
If there's not enough notice time for a public hearing, it can be the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
But either one, it's going to be the following, one of the following two meetings.
So you have a couple weeks, we're probably, okay.
And then perhaps at the next meeting as well, we can start.
Yep, we can start.
Keep going, keep going.
So while you're there, Michael, we're going to actually move you to, to now, so everybody can give their reports and head out.
I'll send my board report now?
So just quickly, very quickly, really, really quickly.
Point is, they're so like fine, so.
Okay, there's a couple of new things that we've done on campus since, in some of the buildings since the last meeting. Okay, there's a couple of new things that we've done on campus since, in some of the buildings since the last meeting. New doors were, a new door was installed in the eastern part of the elementary, going out to the playground area. It's a real nice door. And there's a new door on the district office as well, the main door. Twelve larger lockers were put up in the middle school, right next to the library upstairs. A little bit less lockers, but then now they have more room. The old lockers were about that wide. And nowadays with kids with their backpacks and all, they can't fit in those small lockers.
Can we bring up the lockers?
Sure.
At what point do we stop fixing the locks continuously and put that on the list?
I was just talking to Julie about that before, and it should be on the list. Because I, we're already getting prices for the rest of, not the rest, but the lockers upstairs, and I did leave that off the list. Julie and I have been, have been working on that with Nickerson right now.
Gary spends more time fixing locks than it's probably worth buying a locker.
I agree with that. And then the next question was, should we start getting lockers that don't come with the locks, so people can get their own locks? But if, if that's the case, we would still need the kind of locks where we can get into the back with a key.
Make them with the, with the key in the back, and then they have to buy their own lock, and they have it for six years or whatever.
Identification we can do at this point? Why even like use locks? Hand printed.
So you'll put that on the list?
Yes, I will. And I'm sorry, I forgot to put it on there. A new roof was installed on the fire escape at Mabel Merritt. This was done in-house. Michael Zikatis and Jeff Palace did it. We rented a lift machine and they put all new sheet metal up there, and it looks beautiful. Stormwater management person Wellington Carvello came here and did some mandated teaching to my maintenance and custodial staff. And Murray Prescott has been 25 for 25 with DOT inspections this year. He's perfect. So congratulations, Murray. Thank you.
I'm not sure what the order is. How about Ms. Sniffen? Call you guys out of order tonight.
Very quickly, I will keep up my run of mentioning something that I forgot to write on my report. So this Thursday, the 20th, district-wide, we have 15 teachers that will be participating in the next round of staff development as it relates to NWEA. This will be the report-reading workshop where...
Just the NWEA, could you just explain it?
Uh, yeah, the NWEA is the Northwestern Educational Assessment Tool that we are now giving. It's replacing our Ames Web that we've done for quite a few years here at Haldane. It provides us...
And it's part of our APPR.
And yes, it is also part of the APPR. I think I mentioned it at the last board meeting. It kind of gives us baseline data to really kind of track growth for our students. It does not have a ceiling unlike Ames Web. So this assessment isn't, you're not scoring kids based on mastery, which a lot of times whenever we hear of assessments, we think of, okay, there's a mastery and you're going to score the highest you can score. And this really gauges us and pinpoints exactly where the learners are. So the staff development on Thursday, all students have taken the first round of the fall assessments, so that we have our baseline data. And we will be using this Thursday's workshop to really figure out how do we group our students in terms of instruction? How do we know exactly where strengths and maybe some of their challenges may be? What can we do with it? And there will also be a portion of that workshop on how should teachers be sharing this information with parents? So we're looking forward to that. And I want to say we have 15 staff members participating. The hope is then those staff members will turnkey train. We have after-school staff development hours, or some of potentially, if chosen, the two-hour morning delays to help train all the teachers and how to use this data and report it back to parents. So we're excited about that. The other quick thing I want to mention is we have nine middle school teachers that are taking a course through John Hopkins, along with myself, on the ISTI standards and implementation of technology in schools. So we are working together to collectively share ideas and vision and create the plan of moving forward with a lot of the devices that are coming in. So I'm really excited about the group of nine teachers who are working on that together, with myself and Leah.
I'm really excited about that. I want to know all about that.
So there's a, there's a lot of good stuff going on with that. We've submitted our second assignment, but it's really allowing us time to sit down, share ideas, talk, think about what we have, think about where we're going. The student-centered learning approach, do we have what we need? And if we have what we need, are we effectively using it? What don't we have that we could use? So it's, it's a nice group, and the conversation is rewarding, and it's fun. A lot of it is done interactively via different technology devices, as opposed to just being together, but we do get together weekly.
That's great. Thank you.
Just a quick question, sorry. APPR was resubmitted? Didn't, wasn't there a deadline?
We are, we are in the review room, and it looks like tomorrow at 9 o'clock, we have our final conversation with State Ed. So we've been, we've been in for a long time, and we've made multiple modifications. So I'm hoping tomorrow will be it, and then we're going to celebrate.
Okay. It's been a little tedious.
Yeah, it's, it has been.
Mr. Harrington?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I thought I'd just share, you know, of course, one of the many wonderful rewards of being a building principal is the free pass that you get into classrooms each and every day, and the opportunity to connect with students. And how wonderful it's been the last two weeks to see such rich work, particularly in third, fourth, and fifth grade, as we talk about authentic learning experiences. We have students who are really being charged with driving questions in terms of making their community, their school community, a better place. So we have fifth graders who are taking a really good, hard, deep look at democracy and our system of government to come up with our own student union, with the charge of moving forward with a student council by January of this year. Our fourth graders are immersed in such rich work as mentors, as school ambassadors, and as members of an environmental club. And then some of our third graders are working to help with the mood of the administrators who pull into their car parking spots each morning and have investigated mood and interview skills and letter writing and the use of math in terms of perimeter and area to design new parking spaces. I'm looking at Mrs. Sniffen, of course, because she's one of the selected administrators, along with myself, who will have their parking space painted in the next few days. I believe that Mr. Towery is aware of that. So that's my board report.
Great, thank you. Dr. Shoah?
Good evening, everyone. A couple of items to mention about learner profiles. The learner profile initiative, as we all know, is a great move towards teaching our teachers and our students about their own neurodevelopmental constructs to make that simpler, how they learn best. I think in my last board report, I talked about visiting the Mind, Brain, and Education Center in Manhattan with Dr. Yellen. Dr. Bowers and teacher Sarah Graham and myself have been working with Dr. Yellen on his upcoming presentation at the district on Superintendent's Conference Day on November 1st to bring that learning from the Mind, Brain, and Education Center to Haldane to start training the entire district and beginning to develop the learner profiles for each of the students. This fly is now harassing me while I'm at the mic. The other great piece of that is last week, I had the privilege of going to Yale University, to the Anchors for Emotional Intelligence, I think is what the institute is called, to learn about the lovely dovetail piece that goes along with that on emotional literacy or emotional intelligence, is what we call it now, to not only teach students about how they learn best and how they can overcome their challenges with the areas in which they're more successful, but in recognizing their emotions. This actually was called ruler training, and ruler stands for recognize, understand, label, express, and regulate. So the social cognition piece, that neurodevelopmental construct, which Dr. Yellen freely admits is the most difficult one to teach. This emotional intelligence piece is so important because teaching our students and our teachers to recognize and understand and label and express, and then finally regulate, regulate their own emotions, is critical to understanding how their own brains work and how their own challenges can be strengthened through their natural strengths. So that's a really exciting piece, and I think...
And you went with Sarah Graham and one of our teachers from the academy, which we think would also benefit from this.
So the great part about that is that Gabriel Horn, who was here at last board meeting, who's one of our Haldane Academy teachers, went with Sarah Graham and I. And we decided at the training, in sort of the thick of it, that it would be a really great opportunity for us to roll that out at the academy first, since it's a smaller community of students. And those students typically have a lot of emotions that need to be recognized and labeled and regulated. So it's a really great group to work with. So we're very excited about that. The only other piece that I'll mention from my board report is that we'll be hiring a part-time aide for the high school to cover mandated IEP services. Any questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Crouchy?
Just a quick question on the aid. Do we have, obviously, it wasn't budgeted for, or was it budgeted, and we're just never hired?
No, it wasn't budgeted for, but these are mandated services through IEPs, so we don't have a choice.
There are funds that we have in the budget for unanticipated.
Right.
Okay.
Needs and placements.
Just like we talked about, putting those reserves and that someday we may immediately need them?
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry.
So first of all, since the last time I got to speak with you guys, we had some phenomenal news. We are a blue ribbon high school. When Dr. Bowers was with me, when I announced to the, to the entire student body over the loudspeaker, you heard a giant just applause, like, wahhh, in the whole, the whole building. And then we were able to give them an ice cream social. And then that evening for the curriculum night, which was a phenomenal turnout, we were able to give, give an ice cream social also to the parents and, and to continue the celebration. I also, I know Mr. Salam will be speaking about it, but I want to thank him for spearheading all of the endeavors this weekend, from the pep rally, to the dance, to the homecoming games, all three victories on Saturday, that was phenomenal. I'd also like to thank, well, I know he will be going through that, but also Joe Vergidamo and Eddie Crowe for setting up the pep rally, even Ms. Paparo for all her efforts, and, and everyone on Saturday. My gosh. We have clubs and interest groups that are doing, doing a lot of great, great work. We have two new clubs, two interest groups, Play On, which was packed with students reading Shakespeare and getting into Shakespeare, and the History Club, which is doing a lot of great, great work even in the community. Martha McAlachus and the Drama Students are, as we know, hard at work on Pride and Prejudice, as we heard from Jeremy. One of the things that Jeremy, I thought he was going to mention, but we, we, we talked about having other students mentioning other things, was we're also starting in the high school, an open-mic experience. So every other Thursday during lunch, students will get to perform, read poetry, express their creative side. Can't be too loud, because there are still a lot of activities going on in fifth period, like tutoring and teachers working with groups of students. But, so we want to thank Ms. Friboda and John En Wong for, for working on that. Each class has enjoyed team-building activities at the Teconic Outdoor Education Center. We had the junior class ring ceremony at their retreat on October 11th. And the ninth graders are going tomorrow for the last one of those. We have the PSATs tomorrow. We also have senior college visit day tomorrow. And I want to invite all parents of ninth and 10th grade students to the ninth and 10th grade parent night at 7:00 PM on Thursday. And last but not least, our PTA enrichment program is starting up next week, which is hopeful to target students who have interests in pottery, cooking, I just put it away, but it's pottery, cooking, fencing, ping pong, and drama, the acting side of drama.
This just jumped out at me when I saw it.
Ping pong, yes. So, and that's about it, and...
Could you just briefly discuss what's going to happen at the ninth and 10th grade parent meeting?
Yes. It's an informational meeting for answering the question, what do I need to know before my child is a junior? So it takes you through the high school path, you know, you're, you're new to the high school as a ninth grader. And, yeah, there's college, but it's really, it's really very, very close, you know, in, in the number of years. So it's really kind of an informational night to what do we need to do in high school? What's the trajectory? What do we really need to, do I need to take the SAT 2? Should I take the ACT, the SAT? I heard there's a new SAT. What are the differences? It answers all those things.
Info source for parents?
Yes.
And I believe an e-blast went out yesterday or today? With the schedule?
We sent another one out today.
Okay.
We had an invite last week, yeah.
So I... What's about the different, I mean, I'm just remembering back. I could, when you mentioned it, I was thinking like, it was really very helpful. But what's the difference between AP class and honors classes? And what are the different ways to get into those classes? And the kinds of things that parents are thinking about, they're thinking about?
And even if they're not thinking about it yet, that's, that's very important, too. They may not even know, you know, so... So I want to invite everybody, I want to invite everyone out Thursday night.
Can you say the date please?
Thursday, October 20th at 7:00 PM.
I want to share that I was at the Haldane School Foundation fundraiser on Friday night, and Mr. Crouchy was there, and Ms. Sniffen, and Mr. Harrington, and Dr. Shoah, and Dr. Bowers. And I see Mr. Crouchy, and I said, "Wait a second, what are you doing here? Isn't that the homecoming dance? Like, why aren't you there?" And he said, "Oh, well, I was there. Everything's going fine. The kids are dancing. It's fine." And I was like, "Are you sure? You don't need to go back?" And he was like, "Ah."
Well, I did go back.
He's like, "I'll go back later." He's like, "The kids are doing so amazing." And then I saw him the next day at homecoming, and he was like, "Oh, my gosh, the kids, they literally, they just danced. They had this great time at homecoming, and we have great kids." And that, that made me proud. I was, I was happy that that was the verdict.
Oh, and of cour, are you, you're probably going to mention Homecoming King and Queen, or?
Why don't you take that?
Homecoming King and Queen were announced at the dance as well. So Catherine Parr and Brian Haynes, King and Queen, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything, your questions or?
Mr. Salam?
All right. First thing, I'd like to start off by congratulating our varsity boys soccer team. Yesterday, they tied Putnam Valley in a league game, and with the tie, we actually won a league championship. So a huge congratulations to our varsity boys soccer program and Coach Steve Schweichhardt. Going to be very quick, just a ton of thank yous. Like Ms. Crouchy already said, we had a great homecoming week. We had a great weekend. I just wanted to thank everyone that was involved. You know, there's that old saying, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. That's pretty much the same philosophy when it comes to homecoming. The community, the community does so much and contributes immensely towards the whole day, the whole week. And I'm just so grateful to be part of that. I do very little. I schedule games, I get officials, that's the easy part. But all the great stuff that goes into it has to do with the outstanding work of our parents, our community, and of our student athletes. So right now, I'd just like to thank the Booster Club for the brochures, Catherine Platt, you did a great job with that. I really appreciate that. I know our kids appreciated that. I want to also thank the football and soccer associations for the signs decorating and for running the concession stand throughout the day Saturday. I'd also like to thank our high school band teacher, Ms. Kathy Serino, and the high school band for coming to support our student athletes. It's also a great way for them to promote their music ability and their talents, and I think they did a great job. I'd also like to thank Ally LaRocco for singing the National Anthem during both our boys and girls soccer games. She was there for about five, six hours. Really appreciate it. She has an outstanding talent and a great voice, and it was great for her to display that. I'd also like to thank Deputy Piazza and the cadets for all of their hard work with the parking and safety. You know, it's, it's a huge event, and it's, I don't have to worry about any of those things, just because of the hard work of Deputy Piazza and his cadets. So thank you again for your time and for your hard work. I'd also just like to thank, like Ms. Crouchy already said, Ms. Kristen Paparo, Mr. Vergidamo, and Mr. Crowe for an outstanding pep rally. They did a great job leading the events, creating a fun day for our students. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Crouchy for all his hard work and his efforts, and more, most importantly, the students. Our students did a great job preparing, demonstrating sportsmanship, showing what it means to be a student athlete. We had three great games Saturday. We were fortunate enough to win all three, but that's not why it was a great day. It was a great day because of the atmosphere, because of the pride they take in their school. It was a great day because of the atmosphere, because of the pride they take in their school and their program. And I just, I'm so fortunate to be a part of that. So I really want to thank everybody, because like I said, it wasn't, it's a ton of people. The whole community did it. Couldn't have asked for a better day. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you to you for all the time and effort that you put in as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before everyone leaves, can we just jump back up to Deputy Piazza, just so that you can, as I know you're also going to share a little bit about the cadet program? Yes? Am I making, am I putting you on the spot? Could you share what you do, what your cadets do, what they did for the homecoming?
Yes, my name is Deputy Piazza from the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. I'm the school resource officer here at Haldane. And I also am fortunate enough to be an advisor for the Putnam County Sheriff's Cadets. So law enforcement training program, it's for young men and women from ages 13 to 21. And it's not really just law enforcement, it's for people who are interested in the military, people who are interested in the community service. We have students from now every district in Putnam County and beyond. We tout 70 students right now, between the age, and some of those are college students. We've got students at Ohio State currently, universities all over Connecticut, and high school students, and we've even dipped down into the middle school. We've altered up, opened up a new program for some of the younger kids. Excuse me. It basically takes place on Monday nights, two hours. We train the kids, usually an hour of law enforcement training, some topic, something current, and then an hour of PT, physical training, maybe drilling and ceremony, marching, and things like that. When the kids train up to a certain level, we graduate them to our Phase Two program, and that's when they get involved with the community service. Those are the kids that you saw at homecoming. Dr. Bowers was nice enough to let us come back this year. We had nine students helping out with parking,
Thank you.
site security, just keeping a good presence and making sure that information flowed back and forth. This is a big campus, does get very tight with all those people here, and they were extraordinary. This is the second year in a row for that. And we do help out with a lot of community service and community events all throughout the county. So if you have an organization, please reach out to the sheriff's office, either myself or right up to the sheriff. He makes the decisions. You know, and if you have a kid that might be interested, please let me know. Give me a call.
We'd like to thank you, too, because the boys were just professional and positive and well-organized, and it's just a pleasure.
Thank you.
And they were happy to be there, and we were happy to have them.
And girls.
And the, yeah. Can't forget the young ladies, so, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue on, but if the...
Well, can we just, I have a couple of quick things on my report. I also want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in homecoming and the fall ball. It was a wonderful weekend, and we had so much fun in so many different places. I'd like to say thank you. So my one thing that I haven't talked about at this point that is part of my superintendent's report is this is School Board Recognition Week? Or actually, this is School Board Recognition Month, next week is School Board Recognition Week, but since we're all together, tonight will be the day, the night that we celebrate. And this year, we did something a little different, and I guess they've done this in the past, where we asked each of the board members to choose a book that they love. And we bought the book, and we're going to dedicate it to our library. And when we open the book, there is something inside that specifies, and I'll read this one, it says, "Presented to the Haldane School Library in honor of Laura Hammond for School Board Recognition Week, October 24th through 28th, 2016." So anybody who reads this book will know that this was related to all our board members. And all of these, we have Built to Last, The We, Free Men, this is a new one. Yep. The Giant Zucchini.
Check them out and see who picked which, see if we can figure it out.
And the Martha Graham Blood Memory. So these are, these are books that are going into our library.
What was the name of Laura? Oh, I didn't see, I didn't understand.
Laura's The Giver, The Giver. So...
No, it wasn't me. Was it? No.
No, The Giant Zucchini was me.
I didn't show this book.
Yes.
I want to guess.
It was the one book that my kids both loved me to read them over and over and over again when they were little, and it's, it's hard to follow. But when you read it over and over and over again, like, they just loved The Giant Zucchini. It was hilarious.
Yep, so this is a good, so each of the books have something inside related to the board member. And so we would like to thank our Board of Education. Many of you probably know this, but you don't think about the number of hours that go into the work that they do for us. There's no payment, except for our gratitude, and so we would like to say thank you to each and every one of you for continuing and supporting our school and our students. You're very important to us, so thank you. So we're going to take a quick five minutes. We have goodies next door, if you could join us, and then we'll say, bid adieu to our administrators and say goodnight.
We are just going to finish up with, Dr. Bowers, would you like to mention our next Board of Ed meeting?
Oh, yes.
That's on your report.
Yes, I would.
And then we'll get to committee minutes.
So I went right by that. And we actually had to remind ourselves today that the next Board of Education meeting is actually on November 1st, which is the day that we have a superintendent's conference day, but we will have a Board of Education meeting that evening. It's not on the 8th, which I was originally thinking it was, and which is good because we'll be in Washington DC getting honored for being a blue ribbon school, so...
Who's going to Washington DC?
Well, Brian's coming with us.
Nice.
Julia's coming, and who am I missing?
You.
Me?
Andrea McCue.
Oh, Andrea McCue, yes, thank you. As our HFA president, and I'm going, there's four of us going. And I don't know, are you going to be there?
I actually really wanted to try and be there, but I will actually still be in Atlanta.
Okay. I know that you were thinking of it, so...
I know, I did really want to go.
There will be four of us, and we're looking forward to it.
Okay, so we're going into committee minutes, Buildings and Grounds, September 29th meeting, Communities That Care, September 28th meeting. It's there for everyone to see. Any communication from the public? Okay.
I do want to say congratulations from our board on your blue ribbon status.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Ms. Diana Swinburne, for anybody who didn't hear her, from the Garrison School Board, expressing congratulations. Correspondence, there's a letter from Mr. Tom Campanile, which I believe I already discussed about our clean audit report, and then a letter from Senator Sue Serino congratulating us on being a blue ribbon school. Going into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
We're discussing the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on October 4th. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. In here is the acceptance of the external audit report that we discussed earlier. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, number nine?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that should be pulled.
No, 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 that's right. That's right, sorry.
That's the measure, so that one's the...
That one's still there, yep.
Did you have a quick, are we good?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the one we discussed earlier.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Going into unfinished business, we have a couple of policy reviews. We discussed the concussion management, or didn't really discuss it, but got Chris Salam's opinion on it. That's the first read for that one, I think. And the other three, that's at least our second read, right? Am I right about that?
Yes.
We discussed them a bit last, last time about foreign exchange students, basically just wrapping them into our already current policy of out-of-district students. Any further questions, comments, thoughts?
I do have one more question.
Yes.
And I can't open it now, hold on. But the foreign exchange students, the way it's worded, I'm...
What are you looking at? Do you know the number? 7133, 7130. Correct the line?
I'm sorry. 7133.
The first one there?
No, it's the other one. My question was, the way it was worded, it made me think that they didn't actually have to live with a family within the Haldane District. Is that the case?
So you're talking about the 7130? This is, can you tell me where in the policy you're...
There's an administrative...
No, is, you know what, it's the, hold on. It's the foreign, it's the third one. The foreign exchange students will be allowed to attend school and will be provided bus transportation to and from school. That read, the, you know, the red line in the 7130.
Yep.
So does this anywhere, and I couldn't find it, and I could be wrong, does this anywhere say that we can take a foreign exchange student who doesn't actually live with a family in the Haldane School District?
No, they would have to live, reside within the limits.
I don't think it says that anywhere. Which surprised me.
Are you talking about, this is for the non-resident students?
Under foreign students.
Okay, I don't...
Where the red line is.
Yeah, foreign exchange students will be allowed to attend the school, that, with the amendment, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Okay.
But that amendment made you wonder if it's someplace else in the policy? Did it specifically say?
That you had to live in the Haldane School District.
No, it doesn't say that, but I think it's assumed, but we can certainly put it in there.
Right, because someone could potentially move to...
I guess, I mean, but there's also, if somebody had a student in a different district that wanted to tuition a student in, but that would be an entirely different situation.
Right.
So we can say residents that reside within the Haldane School District. We can add that.
It does say legal residents, parents who maintain more than one resident, but who's legal residents for the purposes of voting or income taxes within the district are eligible to send their children to district schools.
The third one, 7130, non-resident families must...
And down below, it says proof of residency, there has to be proof of residency.
Must be furnished prior to admission, any child residing in the district. I mean, I think it's pretty clearly implied, but...
Yeah, if you want to make it very specific, we can do that.
Okay, good. Any other questions, thoughts?
So now that these have been presented to us two or three times...
When you're ready, you vote on them.
That's what I was going to say, are we ready, or we have to wait for this change?
I feel like we're supposed to probably wait for the change.
But we can approve the others.
Yep, we can approve the others. So the change would be to policy 7130, correct?
Yes.
And so, does the board feel ready to vote on the other three policies?
Not the concussion one yet.
Want to hang with that one? Technically, it is our second read, because it was given to us last time, but it was given to us very late in the game. So if, you know, if you want another week, that's totally fine.
I do want another week.
All right.
So you want to go on the everything but 7130?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So... All right, the recommendation is that the Board of Education adopts policies 7133, admission of foreign exchange students, 7133.1-r regulation, which is a new regulation to support 7133, and policy 7522, concussion management.
May I have a motion, please?
May I make a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. So going into the Board of Education goals, I believe we have a final version here for everyone to, for us to vote on. So Julia, would you like to...
The Board of Education approves the goals as indicated below for 2016, 2017.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So any further discussion? These are our goals for the year. We've talked about them at length, we've all contributed. Dr. Bowers will make her goals kind of based around our goals. I think they look pretty good. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, going into the internal audit conversation, this is following up on what we talked about last time, so I believe the audit committee concurred that the controllers' report, the audit, it was all very thorough. We don't necessarily need to do another financial, traditional financial audit, like, I don't know what it would be of, but like human resources or something. We feel like at this point, those, those areas have been looked at pretty thoroughly, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility to look at other things. Some of the things that have been thrown around are special education, fundraising, transportation. So I think, you know, next steps are to hear, I don't know if Dr. Bowers, if you have a recommendation for something that you're thinking of that's important, if the board has any further questions or comments, and to see if we can, you know, hone it down a little bit and get some direction, either tonight or, you know, next meeting, but to get some direction.
Well, I have two thoughts. One is, I'll just quickly start with, because we had kind of a quasi-review of transportation last year, where we did have a consultant come in and kind of reviewed some of the practices that we had, and I would say it was a preliminary review, it wasn't an extensive review. One of the things he did talk about was the fact that with the ridership that we have on our buses, if we chose to, we could probably move to one-tier bus run by buying one more bus or having one more bus in the bus run fleet. And that would probably coincide with if we ever wanted to revisit the start time conversation. So that would be one thing. We also had a conversation, and for the board who was there, we had a conversation tonight that really, that there was quite a focus on special education. And when we did our special education review last year, what we did is really talk, bring, we brought teachers in, and we kind of looked at the way things were done as far as meeting the continuum of services, but there are a lot of other pieces in special education. And we may want to do, we may want to look at a number of other layers within special education, including, you know, the conversations with parents. We may want to look at the way we test kids, IEPs, the interface between RTI and special education, how that's been working, and any other areas within that. So it, we could do a more extensive review and kind of understand all the nuances, especially now that we have Tony on board who can really dig in and understand what's going on. So I think those are two very possible areas for review. It's going to be a little different than the normal audit, because it's more like a reevaluation of the program as opposed to a traditional audit. But those, I think both would be very compelling.
And we have a $10,000 budget at this point, right, for the internal audit? So this money would be spent on consultants or whatever services are needed?
Yeah, we did have Dr. Donna Ryder come in and do our first analysis. We may want to look at... We may want to look at other people with expertise in other areas related to special education and/or transportation.
And fundraising, we're not going to leave out fundraising.
No, but that fundraising, did we have that in our audit this year, the special classroom fund?
Extra classroom activity fund, but as far as policies, I think, and procedures for fundraising.
Well, that's, we are getting a policy. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, we've asked Erie Bosse's to pull a policy together for us.
But weren't we talking about all of the different facets of all the different procedures, of all the different groups that are fundraising, and having it put in a certain way so that everybody does it in the same manner, so we don't have a car wash a quarter of a mile down the block at the same time, you know, at the same place? There's so many different facets, and then who controls what? What organizations are actually part of Haldane, can they use the name Haldane, all those things? I think that's a pretty important.
Is that really, is that an audit, though, or is that more about the protocol?
Well, I think that's exactly what we're auditing in these, we're not auditing money, we're auditing procedure.
We're auditing policy and procedure, but what's interesting is that all of the fundraising groups are not under the Board of Education's offices.
Which is part of the reason why I think it should be.
But it gets a little tricky, can we spend Board of Education audit money managing private organizations? I'm just talking out loud, I actually don't know the answer.
Well, we would manage the policy and procedure that the school has for those organizations to come to us.
Right, so that's why we're in the process of creating the policy, but we may not be able to do what Jenna's talking about, because we can't, we can't regulate what outside agencies can do, but we can regulate in relationship to the district what they do.
So we can create a fundraising policy about how we accept funds and what can and cannot be used, what Haldane's name can and cannot be used for. But I don't know that we can regulate how the booster clubs do their fundraising. I'm wondering if that's.
No, but we can say, we can regulate how, the procedure for how the money comes into Haldane.
Yeah, but that's just a policy, that's just a, that's not an audit, I think. I think that's just a writing a policy saying, this is how we're going to accept money, and this is what type of money we're going to accept.
But is there more to it than that? What about the PTA doing, oh, the PTA is separate too, what about each class raising money? And how that money goes through, what about, you know, there's.
Class, I think, is different, because that is under, that's the extra classroom.
And so my point is, it would be good to have an overall audit and review of what we do have control over, what we don't have control over, how we'd like to see this come in this way, how we'd like to make sure that the ones that are, you know, connected to Haldane internally, that they're not competing with each other. You know, I think everyone could be done more effectively if everybody was on the same page.
Have we done anything like that in the past? Not to my knowledge.
Which is probably all the more reason why we should do it.
I think they're all great topics.
Right.
A question regarding for the special ed, do you see that being an audit firm? Or do you see that being an example of bringing in like a consultant?
More like a consultant, because you really have to have an expertise in special education.
Right.
The one thing I would really like to make sure happens with an audit like that, and I don't think that this is the case, I'm not saying that I think that this is a problem for a district, but I think around the country, different kinds of parents have different levels of knowledge and different types of, and experience different levels of enfranchisement about how to advocate for their children. And I would want to make sure that, not that you don't, but that an audit like that really made sure that even the parents that are less vocal and possibly not as enfranchised because they're immigrants, because they are of a different socioeconomic class or whatever it is, but that we really make sure that these services, and again, it's, I know this is the district's intention, but really make sure that.
They even understand the process.
That, yeah, that we're serving all students. I mean, I think this is a community for lots of, in lots of good ways, is becoming more aware of different, of learner differences. And, I mean, I'll speak for myself, I certainly felt very enfranchised when it came to advocating when I felt like I needed to advocate, but I think we really want to make sure that that's, that that's not what it takes, that it's, and I think that's what we're doing with the learner profiles, and with response to intervention, but anyway. I just felt like I needed to say that for some reason.
One thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think it's really, it is something, it's been an issue, special education, it's been an issue since Dr. Bowers got here, I think, among lots of parents. It's been a concern of the communities for a long time, I think we've made some really positive steps. And I think Dr. Bowers is so, and, you know, others at the school are so committed to making sure that we get this right, and so really building on the momentum, I hadn't thought of it, but I think, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And is it the right time for that with new people, or should we let them get their feet wet and do that in the next one? Which timing makes more sense?
I don't necessarily see this as a one-year review, too. I mean, this may be ongoing with some committee structures that could be created. And I think it's important to hear, I think this year would almost be more the learning walk kind of conversations.
So maybe it's not an audit, that's not an audit for this year, maybe it's letting them get in and figuring it out.
But I do think we should probably have a consultant do it, I think it's more important, I mean, we need to sit and listen and understand what people are thinking, and have somebody else help us kind of, I guess, design what it is we're looking at.
That's where the cost comes in, you know, the word audit is a little like, not exactly appropriate. It's more just about like, where do we feel like we need to get, we need some assistance to look deeper and to go deeper. And we would need to bring, like Dr. Bowers was saying, somebody in to address special education. We would need to bring an expert in to address transportation, and that's where the cost will be. And it might be a cost that's spread out, it might not be, we need $10,000 this year, maybe it can be spread out over.
Oh, I thought we did this every other year, no, am I wrong? I thought that's what you said.
We have, annually, we have $10,000 budgeted for an internal audit. And that form of the internal audit can be flexible, because we're a small school district, so we don't have to do a traditional internal audit anymore. We can.
We don't do anything.
We haven't, right? We haven't either?
No, we do.
No, we.
There's a difference.
It's only the internal audit and the external audit.
Well, the law just changed.
We do it every year.
We do that, and a technology one, technology security, so that becomes our, instead of us saying, you know what? Cool, we don't need to do an internal audit, let's put that $10,000 towards something else. The school board up until this point, at least, has said, you know what, let's keep that $10,000 in the budget and use it to focus on something that we think is interesting, or could use a little focus.
So you asked us to bring it to the Audit Committee, so we talked about it at the Audit Committee meeting, and you guys, I think, got copies of it and sent it out. We talked about, you know, the eight, in 2009, we had an audit of HR and payroll, because there were problems. And it got needs improvement in pretty much in four out of five categories. So maybe that might be interesting to see now, because there's been a huge.
In the Comptroller's Report.
Right, but the, but in, but in the, well, but not like, not like to this level, in the, these are not the same issues in the Controller's Report, Ann, right? That's in the internal.
No, they're not, that's from, what, 2008, '09?
2009, that you sent us.
Right. And I think Tom responded with a recommendation to that.
Yeah.
Right?
As far as.
As far as he thought that it was, I don't have it in front of me, but he thought that it was an in-depth review of HR and payroll. No, that internal audit, but because it was older and because payroll and benefits are the largest expense of the budget, he said, you know, you could say, let's revisit that again, you could say, let's do a risk assessment, which I think the Controller's Office really was a risk assessment, or you could do what you're discussing now. It's really a flexible line item, the internal audit. But I think the last thing that I remember reading, and I don't know if I was copied on all of it, was that he did recognize it was a thorough internal audit. It was meatier than some that we'd had in the past few years, because that was the older company that we didn't choose anymore. He said if you did want to have a focus, because it's the largest piece of the budget, it's 75% of the budget, go ahead and do it and see if you've, you know, improved.
Right, well, I think that was the point, that it was very thorough, but it was also.
That's a good point, because I thought that that was covered in the Comptroller's recent audit, but you're saying.
They did a risk assessment of every area.
But they didn't go as.
They did not go in-depth, what they went in-depth on was the budget transfer and the IT that we had to address, and we made our changes, that was the focus audit for the Controller.
Right, and this could be a real apples-to-apples, I mean, we basically give them this report from 2009 and say, this is what they looked at, look at it all over again, and reassess. And, because, I mean, there's just been a huge amount of work in this area, so, I mean, it would be interesting to see. So, just another good idea.
Another good idea.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I feel like they're all really good ideas. I could see value in any of them. I mean, I feel like on a personal level, I'm kind of leaning towards the special education thing. I feel like we're a little bit in special education mode with Dr. Shoah and the learner profiles, and I don't know, I just feel like we're kind of in it. But, but I'm open to suggest, you know, Dr. Bowers, if you have a feeling, a recommendation?
Well, I think they all have merit, and it's really the pleasure of the board, what you'd like to see happen. I mean, we could also do an extended kind of assessment, we could do more than one. So that's up to you, and we could bring it over a couple of years if you want to do that.
So my, I mean, I, one of the things I think that's difficult about what was discussed at the Audit Committee is there were just so many different options, and there wasn't, I walked away from the meeting thinking that there was nothing really pressing. It was like, you could do this and you could do that, so what I took away from those meetings was that, well, I hear what Ann's saying, that the Controller's Audit was not this super in-depth audit of something like payroll at such a big expense, you know, they, they did go through and did some. They looked, they did the risk assessment and did everything, and everything really, the things that needed to be addressed have been addressed. And that, and even Tom's email, which I just took a look at, was really pretty much like, well, you could do an audit of payroll because it's so big, or you could do a risk assessment, and so when I think about that and I think about the conversation, I feel like, I actually feel like on those things, I would be feel, I would be comfortable waiting a year. I would, I would be comfortable not, you know, given that we have this limited sum of money, not doing a risk assessment or not doing an in-depth audit of payroll, these more traditional internal audits, and instead, think about conducting something along the lines of an audit, or I might even call it a needs assessment, you know, of, I don't know, but an audit of special, of special education. Again, because it's been, it's been a topic of concern, the district's engaged in some, you know, developing new and innovative practices, it's something people are really committed to, it's something Dr. Bowers is really committed to. It's, it's, again, there's been a lot of community attention about it, I think it's, I think it's a really important area. And I think it would really be really good to have somebody from outside come in and give their assessment, I do, a third party.
I kind of feel like we're doing that, though, and maybe this isn't the year we should be assessing after the fact.
I agree, I think it's early.
That, so we have Paul Yellen coming in, and we have the new teachers on assignment that are working on putting these processes into place, and I would think we kind of want to wait to see what happens, how it all goes, and then next year, maybe evaluate the process and how it all worked, and that's just my opinion. That's, I was kind of thinking along those lines, because special ed is one of my hot topics, always. But I feel like we may be premature, and then next year, want to find out, well, how did it really work? Did it work well?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's one year's.
Or it's two years or three, I mean, the topic not for today.
But I had the idea, I mean, and I hear what Laura's saying, because I think what we want to get at, because Diana said this too, ongoing, it's like, well, let's look at this in year two, and let's think about how we're going to come back and look at it in year four, et cetera. So I'm also fine with that, I actually really am fine with anything.
I think transportation is actually a great one to look at, because it's costly, it's something that we said that we should be saving through the consultants' work last year. I think we were able to save in the $60,000 area, from what I'm recalling, off the top of my head.
I don't know if that was the, was that the consultant's work?
No, that was kind of our own internal.
That was Dr. Bowers investigative work.
So I'm not sure, actually.
We have an internal auditor.
What the consultant did, but maybe it's something that we should consider, and see if there are other places that we could be saving money.
I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I felt like you were a little disappointed with what you got back from the transportation audit, or whatever we, review, or whatever we were having, it didn't seem like it really bore much fruit.
No, and I don't think that that, I think that we would look for something far more extensive if we were to do a transportation study. And we have a small transportation department, so it's not, it's not that it would be a huge assessment, but there are still some ways to look at it and to make sure we're doing our due diligence there.
And is that a $10,000 ticket item?
No, I don't think so, I don't think it would be that much. But I would like to go back to what Laura was saying, because one of the things, when you see my goals, which are following your goals, one of the things that we've talked about in the learner profiles, it's, it's in a category of its own. It's not necessarily RTI, it's not necessarily special ed, and it's all, and what we were talking about this year is really focusing on tier one part of the process, and then next year, looking at tier two, which is more RTI. And you're going to have, we're going to have different assessments based on the needs of the kids. All, the general ed students will all do the first tier. And then if there's additional need, there will be a second assessment, which will be much more extensive, that will be related to RTI. And then there'll be a third tier, which will even be more extensive and will be for special education. And so we actually will, this year, be looking at one and three. And Paul Yellen will help us refine our special ed tier and create our first tier, and the next year, we'll really focus on the middle. So, but I'm not sure, what we're doing right now is really not special education. But it will be, and it will kind of roll into that, and so I guess it's, I think that it's something that will come into it, but I'm really talking about really looking at the continuum of services, the nuts and bolts, or how we're servicing kids. Are we providing what the students need, the families need, how are our assessments being done? What is, what do our IEPs look like? And every year, there is an indicator that comes from the state that we have to measure. So there actually is an audit every year. So there actually is an audit every year on one factor within special education. And so that's something that we do, but it's not an external. I'm more, I'm more thinking about the, the children community kind of focus and whether we, they feel we're meeting their needs.
Right. So that's not something that you need to wait a year to figure out. That's ongoing, that's something the school's been doing for...
Yeah. And then we can roll the other parts, which Laura's talking about. As they phase in, they, they're rolled into the RTI or the CSC, depending on what it is that they are. So, but they're all good ideas.
Well, do, is anybody having a leaning? Does everybody, you guys want to think about it some more?
How much, how much will each of these cost in your...
I would really have to go out and, and put out RFPs and see what consultants, you know, what they would include within it.
So technically, we could do two of the four? Technically, we could do, like, it seems to me that the fundraising one is going to be significantly less extensive than the payroll, human resources review of what, right? So...
So we could start, and if we did a, a large one, it wouldn't have to be just a one year. So, you know, I also want to, I also have to say you have a limited number of people doing all of the stuff we're doing. So I think we have to be careful not to overwhelm ourselves because we're also creating, doing all this creation at the same time. So I think we have to be cognizant of the limited number of people doing, you know, a lot of heavy lifting right now. And so that, that has to be considered.
So, I mean, would you feel comfortable? I feel like the fundraising issue could be, you know, we're going to put in a policy, and that might be a good step. And I don't know how to get into the weeds with private organizations and their fundraising. Maybe there'll be some movement on that in the athletic booster club.
But it's not just the private organizations. Each class has their own fundraising, each, you know, so there, there is plenty of internal.
Yeah, but you're talking about the stu, and, and there needs to be more protocols, I think, put into place.
Right. Student council, each class, there's plenty of internal, too.
And we've also had the...
Caitlin Morley is the central treasurer for the majority of those.
Right. So, I mean, it's, it's certainly worth a look. And then we also have the foundation that's, at this point, they're looking at some new types of interface that they, they have had recently, and they're looking at making some modifications to their charter and how they're going to be following through, which also will hook in to what we're doing. So that conversation has, has begun with the foundation as well.
So you want to put fundraising as a, all right, we're going to make a policy soon and then do the audit next year, the audit of the procedures next year?
That makes sense. But I think we could also, part of the policy will be to look at the, what's happening internally, too. So I think that there'll be a little bit that will start.
But it won't take funding to do?
Well, maybe. Depends. I think we have to really think about what we're doing and, you know, we can, we're going to have to put out RFPs and see what people, you know, can do for the funds.
Let's say we went with the special ed topic. I know you gave some guidelines as to what you, how you think we would start. So we would get a consultant to come in and basically review how we're handling, how we're handling our special ed needs.
Well, we did, we did one last year, which was just limited, which was limited. How are we with, internally within the school, how are we providing that? But I think now it's important, as, as you do, I know, that we move beyond that. And it's, and look at the interface between external and internal and laws and the, the requirements of Part 200 regulations and all of the above. So, I think that, that we, that we could include.
I don't want to be impartial here, but that's one of my top priorities.
Yeah.
And transportation was my next, but we all have priorities.
So, can we, should we just straw poll it here a little bit, just to see? I mean, maybe there is consensus. Can we do that? Are you guys comfortable with that? So Laura, you're feeling that the special education is, is number one for you. I'm also feeling that way.
Me, too.
Okay?
See, it's funny, because I look at special education as that is, that, that is, yeah, that's the way, it should be a constant, not a, oh, we're going to focus on this this year.
I think what happened is we've had so many changes over the recent years that everybody...
So is it the right time to do it now, or do we do it after they get their feet wet?
We already, we've already had our feet wet. We've been, since I've been here, I can tell you that has been one of the prime, primary areas of my focus for many different reasons, but there have been, there has been focus.
I would never say no to special education. However, I do think transportation, I'm willing to let the fundraising, if we work on a policy, I'm willing to let it go for another year, but I definitely think that needs to be looked at.
It's hard to look at.
Right? Without a policy in place?
Well, exactly.
That's my only concern, is that if we don't even have a policy...
A policy is where we have to start.
Well, we have a policy, but it needs to be revised.
It needs to be revised, made clear.
And the protocols.
Yes, and dispersed.
Yeah, and I think we have to get the kids involved.
Yeah.
Can we just get, I mean, again, I don't know if we'll do this, but with special ed, see, transportation is, they're going to look at the bus routes. Payroll, they're going to look at payroll. Special education, there's so many, it's not just, you know, I mean, what exactly are we looking at? Are we looking at student programs? Are we looking at, I mean, there's so many things.
That's what I said, I feel like it's ongoing.
You know, it's just massive.
And Dr. Bowers said that she would identify the connection between external community. That's what the focus would be. Are we meeting...
I also think I want to do a review of, an IEP audit, which is something else that, which brings in testing and continuum of services and, and the necessities of the district. I think that's also part of it. So I'd like it to be two-pronged, but I do think the, the interface and how we're, how we're providing services to students is very important, and the interface with the community.
I think it's important, though, if we bring in somebody, it should be someone that has really, I mean, as far as having like, very, no connection to the district or to people within the, like, it shouldn't be someone that would work, that knows Peggy, or, you know, or knows you, Dr., I mean, it should be someone that's completely impartial to everybody in this district, so we know we get a real, open, honest sense.
Absolutely. I agree.
Okay, well, it sounds like the board has some consensus, that we all agree that all the topics are of interest, but that special education seems to be moving to the top of the list, with transportation at a close second.
So if we can fund some, some of each?
Transportation doesn't seem to be like it would be a huge, I mean, I could be completely wrong, but we don't have many bus routes. There's been some work already. You were able to just look at it and come up with solutions.
But I think what Dr. Bowers said earlier is important, not to split too much focus for the small handful of people that are doing all the work.
And the one, one of the real...
Right, I think we should pick one and go with it.
Given how much, I think, how much more efficient that transportation is, given some of the changes that Dr. Bowers has made, and one of the things we might be able to accomplish with a transportation audit would be having one bus run. And we know we're not anywhere near the point of being able to change start times, given all the other factors that led us to reluctantly leave that on the table last year. I don't, I, I think...
It's not the right time.
It's not the right time. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's, it's not going to give us as much of a payoff as some of this other stuff, I think.
Okay. Okay. Any communication from the public? We actually have one more thing to talk about. We have two minutes to talk about it. The Halliday High School Blue Ribbon Celebration. So, Dr. Bowers, do you have a date in mind?
So we were talking with the administrative council today, and we were asking people to kind of weigh in on what, what it would look like. And we're, certainly, it's probably going to be at the earliest mid to, right before Thanksgiving, November, because we have to come back first. And the suggestion was to have a, kind of a celebration presentation, invite people to speak, have the school community, or at least the high school students available for that component, then go out to the flagpole, raise the flag, talk about that, have a celebration for the school community, and then come back and have a reception.
I would like to put in a plug for a morning ceremony, like 7:30 type of morning.
So that's so early.
Well, we won't... I'm telling you, if you want to get people to come before they go to work, if we want to get like, the mayor, the town supervisor, Sue Serino, like, if we want to make this like a real community celebration, I think it needs to happen before people go to work.
But we won't have the elementary kids.
And the elementary kids are the only ones who won't be there, and they'll be there by 8:30. So if you started at like eight, start at eight.
I think 7:30.
And then by, start at eight.
Yeah, but I agree. If you started at eight, anybody who works at nine isn't going to get, isn't going to make it.
Yeah, I mean, 7:30, right, 7:30...
The kids come in at 7:30, right? The high schoolers?
The high school, middle school kids, yes. They do, they come in at 7:30.
Guarantee you, my elementary school kid is up. I'll still be there with him.
So it will probably just be the high school kids, and then we can have the middle and the elementary join us out on the flagpole, and then we could do something here for reception, probably not for the elementary, but at least for the high school and for the speakers.
Yeah, I mean, the elementary, I don't know. I'm, I think that a morning, in order to get, like, if, if that's a goal of ours, and I think it should be, because I think that this is every taxpayer's reward, then I think that we should make it before work.
Okay. So then we'll, we'll make it for the, to begin at eight o'clock, and then to have the celebration out at the flagpole at nine.
I think the 7:30, when the majority of the parents are doing drop-off, I, I think that's a good start.
Yeah.
I mean, because then they're going to have to wait till eight o'clock.
But then we won't have the elementary kids, then it will happen before.
And then probably, realistically, I probably would only go if it was at 7:30, so.
This is what's good.
You know, if I'm going to be honest, probably that would be the only way I would go.
Starts at 7:30. The elementary schools, kids are invited. Guarantee you, they're all up and ready to go by then anyway. They can just come early.
Well, I think we would have to make it 7:45 because the kids would have to get in and get, you know, settled and, you know, and then get back down, so, okay, we can do it then.
And from a traffic standpoint?
Deputy Piazza?
He's seeing the nightmare.
Right, because that is a stoplight issue, right?
We're going to have to figure out parking and...
Put some planning into it.
Yeah.
Well, and, yeah, some parents think they're going to drop off. We can't do the flagpole.
Bring the cadets.
Well, I think that, I think we could, we would have to change the...
The pattern.
The pattern that day, yeah. Because I, I think it's the community feel, when we really have that feeling of community, it's around the flagpole.
Yeah.
Is the weekend not realistic? No?
No. I just have to make sure the dignitaries are willing to come in at 7:45. So that would be the next step.
Who would have to be willing to come?
The dignitaries that we're going to invite in.
Yeah. An idea was also shared with me that I think is a great idea, which is making a blue ribbon a crown the entire school.
Yes, we were talking about that, too, and we were...
Is that crazy? I think it's a great idea.
I can't, I saw today a big giant pink ribbon on a building.
Uh-huh. Where'd you see it?
I don't, you know what, I can't even, I can't remember if, I think it was on 9A, I think, coming north of Croton, between Croton and, and Peekskill. If you, if, if anyone goes up there, I'll tell, I'll make sure I'll notice it tomorrow. I'll pull over and take a picture of it.
Okay, and then if you could get, I'll call and find out how they did it.
Okay.
I think that would be such a conversation starter. People would totally be talking about it. I think it'd be great.
That would be great.
It'd be great.
There were some interesting expressions when we were talking about it, like, how are we going to do that? But, hey, we'll figure...
Just get an artist involved.
Yeah. I'll find out, I'll get the thing, I'll get it tomorrow.
What'd you say?
Car dealer.
Car dealer.
The car dealers must know how to do it.
We'll go up the Route 9, follow him to one of the millions of car dealers.
Do they have big ribbons on them? They do.
You could ribbon your car when you give it to somebody.
Yeah, we did our house, well, we bought our house.
They're very expensive, huh?
I would imagine so is buying somebody a car.
We have one minute in the show left here.
Okay, okay, so I think we're good. We have direction, I can give you a report on how things are going.
Any communication from the public? I have a motion to adjourn.[1766.47]